There we go. Okay, we're gonna do our best just to record this. The wifi for some reason is not functioning. It was functioning fine during the service. We were able to post the livestream of the worship, but for some reason I tried to log in now and it's not working. So, we're gonna record it. For those of you who are watching this later, hopefully, the recording works and we're able to post it later. But for the purposes of our gathering, we wanna just begin. I wanna thank you all for your interest and your willingness to sit through some rather dry information to try and mine a little bit about what's going on and how we got to where we are. But I wanna just begin by inviting us into a moment of prayer. Would you pray with me? Gracious and loving God, we know that all the things that we face are nothing compared to you and your love and grace. We know that every challenge, no matter how big, every mountain, no matter how high, is no match for you. And so, we put our trust in you, Lord, as we enter into this season of discernment. We pray that you would guide our conversations, that you would infuse us with the gracious Holy Spirit posture that you call us to hold. We pray that your will would be done as we discern that will together. Lord, we give you thanks and praise for your Holy Spirit presence with us and with those who hear and experience this now and in the future. Lord, order our steps and guide our path in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Apparently, I got a little too much whipped cream on my pumpkin pie. Alright, so... The purpose of our getting whi... If you were here back during the summer before my baby Boden arrived, we did kind of a town hall meeting because there were some rapidly developing circumstances around the United Methodist Church and some things were moving very quickly. And we felt like we needed to kind of update people. And what we've realized, that we've been doing these town hall meetings since late 2016, off and on, as things have come up. And what we realized is that at the town hall meeting just before Boden was born, that there were people who had not been paying as close attention to everything going on as we nerds were, and myself included. And so, there were some gaps in knowledge and there were people who were new to our congregation who haven't been with us throughout that whole time. Sorry about that, frog in my throat. And so, as we gathered as leadership, when I returned from paternity leave, it was decided that the lessons we learned from doing that town hall meeting is that we kinda needed to go back and catch everybody up about how we got to where we are. And for those of you who know some of... Who know sort of how we got here, I'm hoping there'll be some new information here, or at least some shaping of history a little bit that will help us understand where this came from a little bit. So, let's dig into it. And I have to say, I owe a great debt of gratitude to my friend Bob Kaler, who shared with me his slides. Bob is the senior pastor at Tri-Lakes United Methodist Church in Monument, and one of my very good friends. And they are going through a similar discernment process. And he shared with me... He's a historian by training, and he shared with me his slides, and I was able to modify them for our purposes here today. So, a lot of this information owes heavily to Bob's summary of that. So, hopefully, this will be helpful to you as it was to me. So, a lesson in history. How many of you are dyed-in-the-wool, been this way since you were born Methodists? How many of you have no idea what a Methodist is, but you're just here and you love us? Alright, we got a few of us. Alright, fantastic. So, hopefully, this will be a little bit of a contextualization of what we've been going through here. To understand how things are, you have to know how they've been. And that's gonna take some history. The history of the United Methodist Church is important for our understanding of the current situation. What we see is not merely a conflict over human sexuality, which is the context of the fight right now. It seems to be the flashpoint. It's the presenting symptom, if you will. But really, the result of two different approaches to church, two different ways of being church, theologically and administratively. And they have really emerged as a result of the last fifty-five years, fifty-four years of our history as the United Methodist Church. And we'll get into that a little bit. And we're now finally sort of recognizing the chickens have come home to roost. Some of the seeds of what we're dealing with today have been planted before I was born and have germinated in ways that have been somewhat unhelpful. So, we'll hopefully unpack some of that. So, pre-methodism, we had the sort of 18th century. You had Wesley, John Wesley, of course, our founder. You had people like Asbury, who was really influential in spreading Methodism in America. The American Methodism sort of springs up and takes over to the point that the Methodists were, I believe, the largest organization, not just church, the largest organization in the United States by like the mid-19th century, which is pretty amazing to think about. Really spread rapidly. And there was also a particular brand of German Pietism that was sort of a German-origin brand of Methodism that was influenced by Wesley. The 19th century sort of comes to a head in the history of the, what was called the Methodist Episcopal Church at the time, in 1844, when that church split, our mother church split over slavery, 1844. For you history buffs, you'll realize that that's quite a few years before the Civil War. So, the church has a tendency to sort of fracture before the culture. But we fractured over that. And in the later part of the 1800s, there was the rise of this sort of post-Enlightenment liberal Protestantism, this idea that sort of new strands of theology sort of emerged and began to sort of take root in the Methodist seminaries. And of course, that's gonna become important throughout the history of the 20th century because the seminaries train the pastors and the pastors train the people and lead the churches. And so, if it's in the seminaries, it's eventually gonna make its way into the churches. If that makes sense, right? Now, the 20th century comes along and there's sort of a reunion of sorts. So, there was a split north and south in 1844. And for almost 100 years, they remained as two separate churches, even doing separate missionary excursion into the expanding West. As the... As America expanded toward California, you can find different pockets of current day United Methodist churches that trace their roots to the Southern Church, many of them actually in Montana, strangely enough. There was a strong Southern Church presence in Montana. And then, there's a... There's... You can trace churches that were part of the Northern Church. Those come back together with another couple of versions of Methodism to form the Methodist Church. We dropped the Episcopal part and we just became the Methodist Church in 1939. And it sort of grew out of this desire to sort of mend those fences, to sort of come together in kind of an ecumenical reconnection of these divergent streams of Methodism. The merger in 19... So, that led to about, well, 29 years later, the thought that we would merge with another sort of Methodist-like organization that had become known as the Evangelical United Brethren. And you can see here, the Methodist Church at the time of the merger was about 10 million people plus, and the Evangelical United Brethren was about 750,000 members. There aren't a ton of EUB churches here in our conference, but there are a few. You can find them. And they all have their DNA is a little different, if you will. They're kind of fun to actually explore. But the only one that comes to mind off the top of my head is Christ Church in Fort Collins. There was First Church and there was Christ Church. Actually, there was First Methodist and First EUB. And when the merger happened, someone from the EUB church called the Methodist Church and asked who was gonna be the first United Methodist Church in town, in which case, the pompous folks at First United Methodist Church, and I say that as a loving former servant of that church, informed them that they were the first worshiping congregation in the city of Fort Collins and they would be retaining the First Church. So, First EUB became Christ United Methodist Church. But there was a church in Pueblo. My dad served at St. Paul United Methodist Church, which is near downtown Pueblo. And three blocks from it was another United Methodist Church known as Faith when we moved there. And Faith was an EUB church. So, it had this sort of effect of churches that had kind of been occupying the same space in the same neighborhoods at times suddenly became sort of co-existent in the United Methodist Church. So, there was some merger stuff going on. But new questions emerged. What is our coherent identity? All this merger stuff, they bring their own DNA. As I mentioned, EUB folks bring their own sort of DNA to things. Interestingly enough, the EUB been ordaining women for about 50 years longer than the Methodist Church. So, that's one of the things they bring with pride to the conversation. But what is our coherent identity? What is that gonna be, right? And they set up this commission, 1968, when they merged. They hadn't ironed everything out yet. They earned a big stuff out, but they hadn't ironed everything out yet. So, they formed a committee that's very Methodist. You'll see that theme come up. They formed a committee to say, what are we gonna do? Who are we gonna be? What is this coherent identity gonna be? What are our doctrinal and moral standards going to look like? And so, they created this study commission that was supposed to report to the first general conference of the merged United Methodist Church. Now, the General Conference, for those of you who don't know, is the worldwide gathering every four years of delegates from across the United Methodist connection. So, every sub-area sends delegates based on population. They elect delegates to go to General Conference. And General Conference is the only body authorized to speak on behalf of the entire United Methodist Church. Not the bishops, not any regional conference or any particular pastor, no matter how large their church is. It's only the General Conference that can speak on behalf of United Methodism. So, they were going to receive this commission in 1972 at their first General Conference after the merger. Now, just to kind of set the scene, I was not there, but I am told that it was quite tumultuous. You might remember 1968, if you've been around long enough. There was the Vietnam conflict. There was student protests, civil rights movement, sexual revolution, troubles in Ireland. There's... You can see assassinations, lots going on in the culture, lots of upheaval happening in the world. And there was this rise of two sort of strains, two sort of dominant strains that would sort of become the powerhouses in half of the 20th century. One of them is the Protestant liberalism that we talked about having its origins in the late 19th century. And the other is this sort of evangelical movement, Billy Graham and the Jesus movement, right? So, we sort of had these different kind of strains kind of working at the same time in cross-denominations in lots of different places. So, that '72 General Conference, they decided not to... Not to decide, is really what they decided. They basically incorporated the doctrinal standards of the Methodist Church and the Evangelical United Brethren Church wholesale, side by side. If you look at our discipline today, the current discipline that we operate under today, which is our Book of Rules, has both the EUB and the Methodist Articles of Religion side by side, unedited. They just sort of crammed it in there. Copy, paste, done. Theological statement was very explicitly embraced pluralism, open to many theological expressions and experimentations, which lent itself to a lot of these emerging kinds of theologies, liberation theology, feminist theology, process theology, et cetera, into what was described as the big tent of Methodism. Maybe you've heard that before. The big tent Methodist, right? We're gonna... We're all gonna fit under this big tent. What that meant was there are gonna be lots of different ways of being and believing and understanding, but our tent is big enough for all of those diverse opinions and perspectives theologically. Well, this led to sort of a development of this caucus kind of structure where you had subgroups within the United Methodist Church that kind of advocated for their different strains of Christianity and different theological perspectives. And coming alongside this sort of pluralistic understanding of sort of theological statement was a theologian and historian named Albert Outler. And Outler was sort of a giant. I've got several of his books weighing down my bookshelf in my office. He was sort of a giant in the study of Methodism and his theologies and its practices, et cetera, its histories. And he sort of hammered out what became known as the Wesleyan quadrilateral. Maybe you've heard that term before. Maybe you're having flashbacks to ninth grade math and you're freaking out. There's no math involved, I promise. The quadrilateral is the... These four sort of elements to, as Outler described it, sort of how Wesley thought about theology, thought about faith, right? That we take Scripture and we take in the influence of tradition and reason and experience in our interpreting Scripture and we come out with our faith perspective. So, there's this process. Instead of a statement, it's more of a process, if you will, right? And in 1972, curiously enough, this is the first time that the United Methodist Church inserts language into the Book of Discipline regarding the practice of homosexuality. So, it's inserted from the very first time it could be in the United Methodist Church. A lot of people will point to the fact that it wasn't inserted until 1972, but we have to remember that cultural upheaval. It wasn't really needed to be asserted until 1972. You don't have to assert something as your belief until someone challenges it with a different belief. It doesn't make sense. So, that's why it gets inserted in 1972, is there were people wondering about this and so, they made it explicit in 1972. So, the roots of the conflict. In effect, the roots of the conflict were present from the very inception. We had various strains, caucus groups sort of vying for control of the United Methodist Church inevitably. And the United Methodist Church looked more like a big tent political party. Sorry, we just went through an election. So, you may be having flashbacks there. But various constituencies rather than a church full of core convictions and common mission. And how do we maintain that church in which everyone disagrees with each other? It becomes a big issue in the life of the church and the cultural winds blowing against that big tent, sort of the metaphor. Eventually, the big tent struggles to stay up. So, by keeping track here, 1968, we merged. 1972, we sort of punt on what we've... And sort of embrace this pluralistic perspective. By 1988, it's clear that's not functioning very well. And so, in 1988, at the General Conference in 1988, there was a sort of reassessment of how we had set out. There was adoption of a new theological statement that sort of got rid of the... Not sort of... Did get rid of theological pluralism, reemphasizing Wesley's heritage around the primacy of Scripture, remembering that the quadrilateral is not for equal parts, you know, sort of like one part's reason, one part tradition, one part Scripture. It was Scripture as the foundation interpreted through experience, reason, and tradition. So, reasserted that as kind of the groundwork. And yet, many continued on, right? We'd already had 30 years at this... Well, we... Come to do the math, 20 years. We already had 20-plus years kind of in this sort of big tent mentality and people kind of going all over the place. Again, most importantly, the seminaries. Almost all... There are 13, I believe 13, recognized United Methodist seminaries that received funding from the General Board of Higher Education and Ministry. And I can think of only one of them that would be more in the evangelical camp of the... Of those two strains of liberal Protestantism and evangelicalism. And that's not Asbury. Asbury is actually, if you're familiar with the seminaries that Methodists go to, Asbury Theological Seminary is actually not officially affiliated with the United Methodist Church. It trains more elders than any other seminary in the country, but it isn't officially affiliated with the UMC. Curiously enough. So, there was a reaffirmation of the statement about the practice of homosexuality too. And to be clear what it says, it describes the practice of homosexuality as incompatible with Christian teaching. And that has been reaffirmed, strengthened, and broadened to include issues as they've come up, like same-sex marriage and the ordination of practicing homosexuals and sort of the implications of that statement of it being incompatible with Christian teaching. So, that language has been in the discipline since 1972. And it's just been enhanced and reaffirmed every year since. This pluralistic vision, though, continues to reject that statement and we sort of have churches kind of operating in different ways. The conflict ramps up. And this is sort of where my consciousness of things really began. This started back when I was in seminary. The conflict ramps up as visions dig in. US Methodists start to sort of express regional differences where there's more... There's more evangelical strains of Methodism in certain pockets of the country and more liberal strains in other parts. And sort of, we kind of do this. There are caucus groups that emerge to support LGBTQ issues and abortion and political issues, all sorts of things. The boards and agencies and bishops tend to skew that direction as the seminaries train the pastors and the pastors train and lead the church. And provisions in the discipline are not enforced in many segments of the church. And this is really, when we say that the issue of homosexuality is the presenting issue, it's the symptom, it's not the cause. This is really the cause. The cause is that there is virtually no dependable mechanism for enforcing anything in our church right now. If the leadership in an area don't want to enforce it in the discipline, then it isn't enforced. And if a bishop wants to enforce it in their area, they can enforce it with a vigor that would astound you at times. So, it really depends. The accountability mechanisms have broken down and they broke down before we realized they were breaking down, basically. So, there's really just no way to hold anybody anything we've agreed on, actually. So, that's really the big one. It's very hard to enforce. And the rise of evangelical Methodism in the Global South is another element putting some strain on that. Now, there's a conflict here between sort of a mainline vision for the United Methodist Church. Are we gonna be like the mainline churches? Or are we gonna be more of a evangelical... Are we gonna... Sometimes, people treat that word like a dirty word. But are we gonna be... Are we gonna be more traditional in our thinking? Or are we gonna be more sort of in this progressive mainline denomination thinking? And Methodism is its own kind of thing, but it tends to take on the flavors of the places it's in. So, there's some issues with defining that. A General Conference in the late 20th century is... To the present day, has just been embroiled in conflict. It's like we gather, we send in our prize fighters every four years and they duke it out until we're all bloody and embarrassed on the world stage. And then, we all retreat to our local regions and do what we want. And then, we come back four years later and we duke it out. So, that's kind of been the pattern that they've been in for some time now. And like I said, human sexuality is the presenting issue, but the conflict is much deeper. Conflict is... It's the... It's the thing that we have chosen to fight about, but it's not the reason we're fighting, if that makes sense. You follow me? Okay, so, 2004. I remember this. I was in seminary in Boston. And I remember this vividly. In the 2004 General Conference, Reverend Bill Hinson of the Confessing Movement, was one of those conservative, traditional caucus groups of the United Methodist Church that developed, proposed that the UMC is no longer sustainable. And separation... He basically proposed that separation was inevitable. We may as well, anything that is inevitable better be done as soon as possible. Have you ever heard that? I'm butchering that phrase, but anyway. So, he proposes that separation is inevitable. Well, this causes great backlash. This causes this great sort of panic. And I work alongside colleagues who were present and voted on the floor of that General Conference. It caused a great uproar. And so, they rushed to affirm their unity in the wake of a suggestion that maybe our differences were too big to overcome. There was this big rush to affirm our unity. And I'll never forget the headline. I was sitting in my car, reading the Boston Globe, because that was the only paper I have in Boston, reading the Boston Globe. And in it, big, big paper, there's a whole article, "United Methodists Affirm Unity." And the irony has just never left my brain that when you have to affirm unity... It's sort of like, for you football fans out there, when the GM comes out and gives his unwavering support for the coach, you can bet that coach's days are numbered, right? So, it's a little bit like that. When the United Methodist Church has to affirm its unity, then perhaps maybe unity is maybe not as widespread as we would like. This sense that we would inevitably separate was sort of rejected by institutional forces in the United Methodist Church for obvious reasons. People who are at the top of the institution don't like to see the institution crumble. So, they had this affirmation of unity. But the battle still... It's like they said, "We're united." And then, they went back to putting their gloves on and duking it out. So, why breaking up has been so hard to do? You might be wondering. Can't we just say, alright, well, it's time. We need to do something different? Well, there's a lot of forces that hold a church like the United Methodist Church together. First of all, and primarily, it is the Trust Clause. If you're not familiar with the Trust Clause, it is a provision in our Book of Discipline that states that all of our property and assets here at, in our congregation, here at Brighton United Methodist Church, are held in trust by our annual conference, which is the Mountain Sky Annual Conference. So, we could say we're leaving, if we wanted to. We could say we're leaving, but if the conference disagrees, they have legal authority to take possession of all of our property and our bank accounts and all of our assets because they're held in trust by the annual conference. So, our property and assets hold us together. And it's the same across the denomination. So, every United Methodist Church is in that same boat. We're all held together by this Trust Clause, which has its... And has its roots in Wesley's design of the church. But when there's conflict, it also tends to hold each other together in unfortunate ways. My dad shared an anecdote about church mergers, like individual congregation mergers is like tying two cats together by the tail. And one of them will end up dead and one of them will end up angry, right? So, it's kind of... We're sort of locked in this cage match right now. Churches can't just simply leave because of the Trust Clause without penalty or payment. We're connected through apportionments. Those are the payments that we make to the annual and general conference for the furthering of the denomination's ministry and our connectionalism. And there's this sort of institutional DNA of connectionalism. We are connected to one another. We are brothers and sisters in Christ across. So, it keeps us kind of locked in this battle. So, then, 2016 happens. So, 2004, we had to affirm our unity in the wake of unity. And then, in '08 and '12, there were attempts to change things and nothing really changed. We just more protests and we've had police called to arrest protesters. We've had people smashing chalices, communion chalices on the floors. There was a setup in the middle of the annual conference with several chalices from around the world for communion. And a protester made her way onto the floor of General Conference, picked up one of those chalices and smashed it on the floor in protest to the state of things. So, there's lots of that kind of stuff happening, but no real change in anything, honestly. Just a furthering of the division. And then, 2016 happens. And yeah, you can see that a little bit. Resistance to the Book of Discipline ramps up in the lead-up to 2016. There were several bishops and clergy who came out as practicing homosexuals who were ordained. There were many who performed same-sex marriages, which is still prohibited in our Book of Discipline. There were lots of these kind of protests, very sort of... Well, they're attempting to sort of get ahead of things and anticipating changes in the Book of Discipline that didn't come. And when it became clear that provisions were about to pass that would strengthen the traditional statement and particularly strengthen enforcement in the Book of Discipline, there was a call by large church pastors for the Council of Bishops to, quote, "lead." Imagine that, asking bishops to lead. "Bishop, lead us out of this impasse," they said. And so, the bishops came up with a committee, right? You know this game, right? If there's a problem, form a committee. So, they came up with something they called the Commission on the Way Forward. They proposed it and passed it sort of in a quick... In a quick sort of thing at General Conference. Proposed it and passed it sort of in a quick, in, in a quick sort of thing at General Conference. And what it did is it created a 32-member panel from different constituencies, different, different people from those caucus groups were called upon to represent their perspectives on the, on the Commission on the Way Forward. I've spoken to several people who have been, and I've heard conversations, been, been partied to conversations with people who were on the commission, saying that everything was lovely, they were, you know, cordial to one another, they, they prayed together, they sought the Lord's guidance, they came up with ideas, they tried to put their, their, their best ideas forward, and, well, you'll see in a minute. It was a cordial thing, it wasn't a negative experience for the people who participated. It just didn't, it, it wasn't really destined to work. They developed a plan, well, they developed three possible plans to help bridge the gap and create unity in the church. And then the, the Council of Bishops, with using their authority, called a special general conference. Normally, we meet every four years. They, they decided to call a special general conference just to deal with the report from the commission on these, on these different proposals forward. And they held that in February of 2019. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit, but, so then they were, they were going to talk about that. So, General Conference happens in May. So, so in May, they basically call a truce. They say, "Okay, ceasefire, hold on, okay, unity isn't going so great, maybe it's time we examine this." And so they formed this commission, and it's sort of like we agreed to go to counseling. And then the Western jurisdiction sort of took matters into their own hands. So another layer of polity in the United Methodist Church, there's the local church, that's you all. And above that, there is the annual conference, that's the regional body. Ours is the Mountain Sky Annual Conference. And the Mountain Sky Annual Conference is a part of what is called a jurisdiction, which is a larger regional body. Ours is the Western jurisdiction. We encompass basically everything west, from Colorado to Hawaii, and New Mexico north to Alaska. So we're quite a big geographic area, smallest population-wise, but the largest geographic area. And the jurisdictional conference is basically charged with electing bishops. That's what they do. That's pretty much all they do. They do a couple of small, little administrative things, but mostly, all they really do is elect bishops. Well, in 2016, the Western jurisdiction had one bishop to elect. They had one opening seat because there was a bishop retiring, and they ended up choosing Karen Olivito, who at the time was the pastor at Glide Memorial United Methodist Church in San Francisco. She is an out lesbian and married to her wife, Robin, and, and then she was then appointed to become our, our bishop here. Originally, it was the Rocky Mountain and the Yellowstone Conference. We've since merged into the Mountain Sky Conference. But she was appointed to be bishop of this Episcopal area. She came to be our bishop. So that was kind of a, sort of a wrinkle that didn't help things at the time. We'd sort of agreed to try and find a way forward, and then the Western jurisdiction elected Bishop Karen. That same year, in October, although not entirely in response to, but the timing was, was appropriate, a coalition of traditional United Methodists had already been forming in the, in the lead up to General Conference that year, and it finally culminated in October of 2016, when the Wesleyan Covenant Association, or WCA, founded, was founded in Chicago. And a group was elected to lead that group, and their mission was to either reform the current UMC, or if that was not possible, to lay the groundwork to begin a new traditional Methodist denomination. So that was kind of, they were like, "Let's reform. If we can't do that, let's prepare," essentially is what they did. And all transparency aside, I have, I was at that conference in October of 2019 and have been a member of the WCA since its founding. So just, and I worked on some of the Book of Discipline that they proposed. So full disclosure there. So 2019, that Special General Conference came along, and in between, there were lots of judicial council things. It's a lot like American politics with a little bit of God thrown in, if you're familiar. But they, they met in General Conference in St. Louis, and the Commission on the Way Forward proposed three plans. There's no, there's not going to be a test, by the way, at the end of this, so just bear with me here. There was something called the One Church Plan, which would remove all of the language regarding sexuality in the discipline and leave it up to the local churches about whether they would be willing to host same-sex weddings, because that's the only thing that really affected churches at local congregation level. Leave it up to clergy, whether they would bless same-sex weddings, and leave it up to annual conferences as to whether or not they would ordain self-avowed practicing homosexuals as the language in our, in our discipline. So remove all that stuff and just allow the churches, pastors, and conferences to decide on their own based on the region, sort of regionalization of, of the issue. There was a connectional conference plan, which was probably the most promising, I'll, I'll say that, but was the most complicated and much harder to pass. That would have basically divided us into two separate churches that came together once in a while into a sort of a big tent, if you will. So it's kind of like two different conferences of United Methodism that would be under the big, you know, that big, that big tent that they cast in the 60s. And then there was the traditional plan, which would strengthen the current language in the discipline, and in particular, would, would add in additional accountability measures, acknowledging that that was really, that the language is there, but it's not enforceable right now. So we either need to enforce it or we need to remove it, is basically the, the way that, that they came out. And they left it up to the General Conference, and there was a straw poll, and the One Church Plan was preferred by the bishops and most progressives. It failed to make it through the preliminary straw poll and on to debate. The Central Conference Plan required all kinds of, of really complicated and very unlikely scenarios, votes that would take like three-quarters of all Methodist churches in the world, and you can't get three or four Methodists to agree on anything. I don't know if you've noticed that. So, so that was, that was probably doomed from the beginning, although it was very creative. And the traditional plan ended up being the one that they debated, and it was passed by a slight majority, 53 to 47% of roughly 800-plus delegates that were at that conference. General Conference is capped at 1,000, but it's usually in that 800-ish, 850 range. So 53, 47, it, it passed with wide support from the African delegations that were there. But because of time constraints and a monster truck rally, of all things, that was coming into the venue, I'm serious, a monster truck rally, they, they had to cut the, the debate short and ended up leaving out the accountability provisions. So we had a reaffirmation of the policy without any of the accountability. Remember I said that the proposal from the Way Forward was basically, to understand it simply, remove the language or enforce the language? And they kept the language, but made it, left it unenforceable, which had inevitable consequences. The other thing that they did is they added a paragraph, paragraph 2553, and if you feel like you're in a legal lecture, I apologize, but that's, that's where we are right now. Paragraph 2553 added a, a limited timeframe provision that would allow congregations that objected to the way the issue was handled, the issue of human sexuality was handled in the church, either way, left it open for churches to exit the denomination, to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church, with some rather specific provisions. The first being, it would require two-thirds vote of congregation for all those present in voting. So that's not two-thirds vote of every member on the roll, but every member who shows up to the meeting and votes. Two-thirds of those present in voting at a church conference. It would require the current year's apportements, which for us is around $35,000, give or take, $35,000 a year, an additional year's apportements, and this is assuming that you're all caught up on your apportements. If you're behind in some way, then, then that would add to that, of course, but. So current year's apportements and one additional year's apportements to the annual conference. And then the church would be required to pay the unfunded pension liability. The pension program for all the clergy is held in, in common among all of the congregations, and the, just like any pension, there's a certain amount of it that's promised but not funded, and then they invest it in the stock market and other places to make up that difference, and, and it, it works out, provided everything continues going okay. So there, there is this unfunded bit, and if that unfunded bill ever came due, then that is shared, that burden is shared by all the churches in the, in the conference. So if a church leaves the conference, they're no longer liable for that, so they, they request that you pay unfunded pension liability. And that's determined by the General Counsel Finance on Administration and West Path, which is our benefits coordination agency in the Methodist Church. So they, they, they determine what a conference's unfunded liability is, and then the conference would determine how to, to the local church. It leaves open the possibility for additional fees, so it doesn't, it basically sets a floor for what's required, but it doesn't, and it doesn't enforce any sort of ceiling. So the annual conference can add anything that it deems appropriate to, to the, the list of fees and stuff. And then it requires a final vote by the annual conference before it can be, before it could be enacted. And finally, it sunsets on December 31st, 2023. So you can only use this provision until December 21st, or, yeah, December 31st, 2023. So that's, that's the paragraph there. So after that General Conference, the progressive annual conferences, bishops and others declare statements of noncompliance. The Mountain Sky Conference fell in suit. So the General Conference met in February, our Mountain Sky Conference met for the first time as a united conference in Billings, Montana, in June of 2019, and immediately adopted a statement decrying the, the results of the 2019 General Conference. And, and that was, I can't remember the vote, it was like 85%, I think, in favor of the statement that was, that was passed. Institutionally, United Methodists, who really wanted that One Church Plan, where we sort of regionalized the, the issue, they sort of join up with the resistance, with sort of the progressive side. And US Annual Conferences elect even more progressive delegates to go to the 2020 General Conference, which we'll get to in a second, in an attempt to overturn the traditional plan. Angst and conflict over the passing of the traditional plan causes many different groups to begin sort of seeking separation from the church and developing plans for that separation. And there were lots of different groups, not just the WCA, but there were lots of proposals floated for the 2020 General Conference that, that were proposed and legislation was submitted, and, and they were, there were lots of groups that were seeking to, to separate after that. And then there was a bishop, Bishop Yambasu of Sierra Leone in Africa. He proposed a different method. He proposed mediated negotiation between leaders of these various constituencies. So rather than the commission, which would bring people together to try and forge a path forward in unity, Bishop Yambasu said, "Why don't we get together, these groups from these different interests, these different, representing these different perspectives, and let's negotiate a peaceable separation? Let's find a way to bless each other as we go, rather than tear each other apart." Okay? And so that's what he proposed, that let's get a mediation going, and proposed that to General Conference. So it brought together 16 leaders from these various perspectives, centrist, progressive, traditionalists, and they included several bishops of many different stripes, and in pretty high leadership at the time. One of the bishops involved was the president of the Council of Bishops at the time, so they, they had some pretty serious backing at the time. And they, they reached out and engaged Kenneth Feinberg, a lawyer and a Jew, so he had no stake in whether we survived or not, honestly, which was nice, gave him a nice neutral platform. Feinberg was the, the lawyer who negotiated the 9/11's Victim Fund, as well as the Deep Water Horizon settlement and many other high-profile settlements. So he knew what he was talking about, and, and he knew what he was getting into. He actually worked for the, this group pro bono to, because he just wanted to see, he, he thought religion was important, and he felt like seeing a denomination tear each other apart was not good for anybody. So he donated his time, and this group hammered out an agreement, which was reached December 17th, 2019, and was announced January of 2020, with signatories from all corners of the Methodist Church. And our annual conference actually passed, at the next, our next annual conference, we actually passed an affirmation calling upon our delegation to vote for the, the legislation that came out of this agreement, and it passed by like 95%. So it had overwhelming support from all corners of the church. It's not important the details, because as you'll see in just a minute, the, well, a traditional denomination be formed, exit paths for churches and clergy and annual conferences to take their property without penalty were involved, and the post-separation UMC would then, after their exit, would liberalize their language and policies in whatever way they seemed fit at the time. Okay? That was what they proposed. Now, something happened in early 2020, and let's see if we can remember what that was. That was, that's right, this global pandemic, I forgot about that. I erased that from my memory. Yeah, so we were supposed to meet late April of 2020. If you remember, March 15th, that day will be seared in my mind forever. Ad Council, instead of worship, Ad Council met in the sanctuary, in the fellowship hall here, and we decided to cancel in-person church at that time, and we didn't meet in person for like four months. So, yeah, so General Conference didn't happen. Shortly after the, the American response to the COVID pandemic, that the, it became clear that we weren't going to be able to meet. We were supposed to meet in Minneapolis in, in 2020. So they, they canceled the 2020 meeting and postponed it. They later announced a rescheduling of that for August, September, late August, early September of 2021. That was postponed in February of 2021, because if you remember, there was new Omicron and, or Delta, Delta, we were dealing with Delta at the time, and there were lots of issues trying to get international, remember this is an international gathering? So lots of trouble getting visas and vaccines, and that was right when the vaccines were coming out, so it was really difficult to get people here, and so they postponed it again to September of 2022. You might be looking at your watch going, "Isn't it November 2022? I think, maybe it should be over, shouldn't it?" Except in March of this year, the Commission on the General Conference, which is the body charged with putting on the conference every four years, they came out and announced that they were going to postpone it yet again, and this time, they were going to postpone it until our next regularly scheduled General Conference in 2024. So the General Conference hasn't met since 2016. It's been postponed now three times, and they won't meet again until 2024. Well, immediately after the postponement, there were raised all kinds of questions about why and how that decision was made. There was, there were a couple of people on the Commission on General Conference that resigned in protest and wrote scathing letters about how the process had been manipulated by institutionalists who didn't want to see the vote come up on the protocol and saw an opportunity to, to sort of preserve the unity of the United Methodist Church as they saw it. And so I'm just, I don't promote that to be the gospel truth, that's just the rumors that started spreading, and you know how rumors go, right? There start, there'd be questions about things, and, and so churches started really looking at that paragraph, 2553. To be quite honest, 25, paragraph 2553 is expensive, and any church that wants to get out is going to have to, is going to have to negotiate that, and, and it's not, it's not cheap, and it's a hard pill to swallow, because you feel like you've paid for your church already, why should we have to pay for it again? And so many churches were kind of holding out hope that there would be this path forward that wouldn't cost them so much. But it became clear that that path was at least postponed, but as it became clear later, centrists and the progressives, as you can see, the signers under the protocol, the protocol that would have allowed us to, to leave were passed, would allow churches to leave if, if it were passed. The progressive and centrist signers to that withdrew their support, and annual conferences followed suit, including ours. Ours withdrew its support, and the Western jurisdiction just met two weekends ago, and they affirmed their withdrawal of support for the protocol in favor of something called the Christmas, the, the Christmas pack, I can't remember, it's Christmas something, anyway, that, that would basically, the One Church Plan, would regionalize the issue of sexuality in the church. So with centrists and progressives pulling out, traditionalists asking, "Where's the door?", it became clear that the protocol, even if it were considered at the 2024 General Conference, is not likely to pass. So in the, in the wake of all of that, the Global Methodist Church, which is the traditional denomination that had been kind of waiting in the wings for two years, that had been largely supported in its preparations by the Wesleyan Covenant Association, decided that it needed to launch, and it did. On May 1st, 2022, the Global Methodist Church launched as a new traditional denomination for a couple of reasons. One, the delay meant that there were more and more churches that were seeking to leave apart from the protocol. They were using that paragraph to get out, as expensive as it is. And something like 200 churches had already left the denomination and were just kind of waiting out there in the wings with nothing to connect them. And so there were also other provisions in the discipline that would be possible, that, that allow a bishop and cabinet to transfer a church upon their request. that allow a bishop and cabinet to transfer a church upon their request and votes to a new, or to a, another pan-Methodeist evangelical denomination. And so the thinking was if there were bishops who would be so inclined to help traditional churches find their way to, to the new denomination, that that would be a method that they could do. So they launched the Global Methodist Church to be that pan-Methodeist evangelical denomination they could go to. So that has obviously, it's been sort of this kind of escalation of things, as you can tell. So now, where are we? Anybody lost yet? Get your GPS out? Where are we? The protocol is very likely to, to not pass at general conference in two thousand twenty-four. I don't know all the intricacies of that, but there are people who count the votes and the delegate totals and keep track of things in very specific ways that, that I trust very deeply and would have a very good reason to want the protocol to pass, who are telling traditionalists that it's pretty much a done deal, that the protocol is, is not going to pass. So it's not likely that there's going to be a cheaper exit in two thousand twenty-four than the paragraph twenty-five fifty-three. The UMC is likely, in fact, to not only not pass the protocol, but likely to have the votes to significantly change its positions on a range of issues. So that, that's coming. And paragraph, this is the, this is the timing issue, is that paragraph twenty-five fifty-three will sunset before that general conference meets. So about five and a half months before general conference gathers, any, any church hoping to use this provision of the discipline will have to have done so and be out. So churches are not likely to have options to leave, let alone a better deal than paragraph twenty-five fifty-three in two thousand twenty-four. Does that make sense? So the protocol's not likely to pass. The provision to leave sunsets before general conference meets and general conference is not likely to, is both likely to, to change its position on, on social, many social issues and, and likely to not give an option that's any better than twenty-five fifty-three and likely won't give any option, because there won't be much of an interest in doing so. So that's kind of the lay of the land. Oh, I made it to the end and you're all still awake, mostly. So that, 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 my friends, is, is a blurry thumbnail sketch of how we got where we are. And I know that that's a lot of information. I just kind of vomited all over you. So I'm sure you have questions and if you do, I would invite you to, to share them with us now and I'd be, do my best to, to help answer them if I can. Yeah, soon. Okay. Sure. So given that framework up on the screen here, this sort of converging set of circumstances, we're left with a couple of choices. And I think it's important that we make a choice. This, honestly, I was making this slideshow and writing the sermon at the same time, which will surprise nobody when I say what I'm about to say. The idea of drifting along with the UMC without making a conscious choice to embrace it, I think is, is a failure of leadership on my part, if that's where the church wants to go. If the church doesn't want to go with the UMC, if the church decides they would like to, to explore leaving the church, then, then that would be an option as well. But I think it's important for us to make a decision either way. So we're left with, we're left with a choice. Do we want to pursue disaffiliation, go down that path and, and discern whether that's the case? And if that is, what are the implications and can we meet those implications? And, and if we don't, then we can reaffirm our, our connection to the United Methodist Church and forge ahead there. That's kind of the option, as I see it. Does that answer your question? Okay. Hence our... Yeah, yeah. So to give you a little bit of, of, of an update or sort of a game plan, the administrative council, our, our head sort of administrative body here of leaders, met back in October, right after I got back from paternity leave, with the strategic planning team, which has been monitoring these developments for the last several years and, and been working to, to sort of help guide us in this discerning process. We, we met and decided that we would have this meeting to try and catch everybody up as best we can. And then next week, we want to have another town hall meeting where we're going to present sort of two different visions for a future. One is what a potential UMC, United Methodist Church, might look like, sort of moving forward. And another is what is being proposed and what is being implemented in the, the Global Methodist Church as an alternative. So we'll kind of present both of those, again, with time for question and answer. And we're going to be sending out an email, links to some videos that you can watch to learn more from, from some folks who are more in the know about these different things to try and get some more detail and answer some of those questions and some more resources. And then you come back here, we'll give you, we'll give you some more information about those two different visions for our future. And then we'll, and then following Thanksgiving, so that'll be next week. And then the week after Thanksgiving, we're going to have three or possibly four, we're going to have at least three meetings. Three of our leaders are going to host small groups in their home. I will not be there, so you can feel free to talk about me behind my back. It's good. I'm just kidding. You can feel free to express yourself without, without worrying about me being there. But it's more of a process and digest, feedback, spark conversation around sort of what you want to see our church, where you want to see our church move in the future. And there'll be details about that in signup sheets available throughout this weekend and, and at our meeting next week, we'll have those out. And then the reason for all of this being so quick and rapid fire, word that we are going to have to, if we're going to consider disaffiliation as a congregation, our administrative council is going to have to vote to begin that, cutting out, begin that process no later than January thirteenth. So we need to know where you all are so that our leadership can move in whatever way the congregation is, is kind of looking to go. So we're going to be doing our, our regular annual charge conference in December on the fourteenth, on a Wednesday evening. And at that charge conference, we're going to do a straw poll to sort of see where our congregation members are. And we'll use the results of that and those feedback sessions to, to guide our leadership from the administrative council on which way to go. So that's, that's kind of the plan. And unfortunately, we're in a short timeline because of the, of the, the need to, to meet the annual conferences deadlines, should we decide to try and disaffiliate. Yeah, Shirley. So, yeah, Les? Oh, yes. So Shirley was asking what other resources could people turn to for more information and to, to sort of independently dig into this, if you'd like. I'm more, I'm more in tune with the traditional side of things. So the WCA has a website that has lots of information. The Wesley, the, the Global Methodist Church has a lot of information about what they're doing and what's going on. There's some caucus group things like the confessing movement and particularly Good News Magazine is another resource that would give you sort of traditional perspective on things. It's harder to know where to go for the sort of progressive side of things. You can go to Reconciling Ministries Network. I don't know what they have about this specifically, but you can get a sense of kind of where, where they're at. Let's see, there is a uniting Methodist organization that's sent, that claims to be a centrist group that was kind of working behind the scenes. They may have some information about, about that as well. And I can, I can dig in to see if there's more. There's a, a video that we're going to direct you all to that has a member of our Mountain Sky Conference cabinet. He's a district superintendent. His name's Jeff Rainwater. I've known him for many years. He's a good guy. He made a presentation to Tri-Lakes United Methodist Church a couple of months ago about his, his take on the United Methodist Church. And there's some Q and A at the end of that too, with the, that particular congregation, but I think it'll be helpful. And, and he gives kind of a, where the UMC is heading sort of summary. You might also look into the, the Western Jurisdiction Conference. So they just met, they don't do much, but when they do, sort of a flurry of things. And they just met to elect three bishops and they also passed some, some, some resolutions calling on delegates of the conference to, sort of casting a vision for where they'd like to go. And the other jurisdictions did similar things. So if you look up the different jurisdictions, there's the Western jurisdiction, that's ours, there's the Northeast, the Southeast, the North Central and the South Central jurisdiction. So there are five jurisdictions in the United States. And all of them just met two weekends ago to elect bishops and, and they also passed resolutions. So reading over some of those resolutions could probably give you an idea of where the UMC is heading and, and what that might look like. So that would be another resource for you as well. Other questions? Shirley, I have, maybe I've bored you into a coma, but Shirley, I have not answered all of your questions. You know, I was going to look that up. You had just mentioned forty-eight from the Louisiana Conference just left. There was a, a large number of churches from the Texas Annual Conference, which is like Houston. Texas is deceptive, because there's a Texas Annual Conference that's like one-fifth of Texas, because Texas has five conferences. But the, the Texas Conference is like southeastern Texas. And they had a number of churches, including their largest and second-largest churches, left later the summer, early the summer. We had six churches leave the Mountain Sky Conference as of our meeting in October. We voted on that in October. All of those were smaller congregations. They were like quarter-time pastors. So, so they had a little bit easier path than, than a church our size. But there have been a lot of churches fighting in Florida, but I don't think they, they've been able to get out because of some issues with their bishop. There have been several churches in the North Georgia Conference that have left. And that doesn't count the, like I said, the two hundred or so before all this sort of ramped up that, that had already left. So I don't have a firm number, but it's in the hundreds at least. There was also two Eastern European annual conferences that voted to leave wholesale. They, the whole annual conference has left and joined the Global Methodist Church. So, and there are African conferences that are looking to do similar things, but they're also having trouble with some bishop stuff, so. Any other questions? I know this is a lot of insider baseball and a lot of, a lot of like detail and, and the history of conflict is, is not, is not always a clear one in the Methodist Church, but I appreciate you sitting here and, and taking an interest in how we got to where we are and, and hopefully taking an interest in where we can go in the future, wherever that may be. My hope and my dedication in this whole process, as I've said from the very beginning, is to keep you informed. To her credit, at our annual conference this last year, well, back in October, the, the bishop herself cited another clergy person in our conference, who was the district superintendent who brought me here, believe it or not, Eric Smith, who pastors a church in Denver now. They were at a jurisdictional meeting and they were talking about this, this disaffiliation push by a lot of traditional churches. And, and she echoed Pastor Smith's question, how are we going to inform our churches about this? And he was serious about that. He was coming at it from the, we need to inform churches so that they can, they can take the time to consider and affirm their support and, and continue participation in the UMC. He was taking that, that tack. But the idea is that whatever we decide, we need to decide and not just drift, not just sort of slide into wherever we're going to go. And that's where a lot of churches will go. If they don't know about this, if they don't become informed and don't have a conversation about it, they're just going to find themselves in a UMC that's going to be changing a lot, I think, in the next decade. And, and by then, it might be too late for them to make any decision. So, so my dedication to you all is to make sure that you have as much information as you need to, to sort of know what's happening and know what to expect and to make as informed a decision as possible. That, that's really my, my goal. I, this is really your church. It's not my church. One of the weird quirks about the United Methodist Church is that the pastors are actually not members of the congregations that they serve. I am technically a member of the Mountain Sky Annual Conference. And so I don't even get a vote. Obviously, I, I have a really big mouth and, and I speak in the pulpit, so I, I have voice, but I don't have a vote when it comes right down to it. So you all have the vote. Any, any member of our congregation, any active member of our congregation has the, the ability to vote, including our teenagers. The, the youth who have gone through confirmation and formally joined our congregation are officially members and have every right to vote as well. So we'll have, any, any member is, is welcome to vote. Now, if you're not a member, I'm sorry to say that, that you won't be able to vote. That, that might push you over if you're interested in, in joining so that you can, there was, there was a, there was a hilarious conversation we, sidebar, we had it at, at the administrative council meeting, that maybe we'd have a membership drive right before the vote, but I'm just kidding. But the, but the, but that is something to just be aware of, that if you want to, to have your voice heard, you need to be a member of the church. But that's... Any other questions? For the good of the order? All right, we will meet again after church next week with hopefully something a little more interesting than the blazing history lesson that I just tried to attack you with. But we'll have some information about the future UMC, some information about the Global Methodist Church, and we'll have signup sheets for those, those talkback sessions that we're going to have, those house meetings that we're going to set up. And, and you can sign up for a time and a place. We'll have a variety of times throughout the week, evenings, an afternoon or two. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to provide an opportunity for anybody who would like to, to avail themselves of that. And just know that, that my door is always open. People don't like to bug me. I'm not sure they won't call me. I don't understand that. But I'm, I'm here. I'm here every, every Monday through Thursday. I'm here at the church and, and if you'd like to set up a time to come in and visit with me or just drop in, you see my black car out in the parking lot, drop in and, and say hi, that's part of the gig, right? There's, there's always more bookish things I could be doing, but, but really ministry is about people. So if you need to drop by and talk, I'm glad to visit with you, answer any questions that, that you have or, or anything that comes up and try to point you in whatever direction I can. Well, thank you all. I appreciate your attention and your time and we'll, we'll hopefully see you guys next week.